Really something we've gone through with the Planning Commission, the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I think it's just a good refresher in this day and age with communication changing as much as it has, the, I think, open meetings, the, and how that might even impact that, and whatever else. So, at this point, we'll just turn it over to you.
Thank you. First, can everybody hear me?
If you, and Jeff, actually, if you press your button on yours to keep that red light, there you go. You're good.
Can I have the red button or the top?
Good evening. The, as the mayor said, I think we thought this would be an opportunity both for a bit of a refresher course. We're certainly not going to get into any significant detail in a half hour, and I'd also like to leave at least a few minutes for you at the end if there are specific questions. So, I'm going to presume a certain level of familiarity both with the Open Meetings Act and the Freedom of Information Act. So, I'm not going to hit, to the extent I can avoid it, some of the more basic things. We're just going to kind of cut to some of the more interesting things, or problematic things, maybe. So, as a starting point, the City Commission certainly presumably is aware that you are, under both the Open Meetings Act and the Freedom of Information Act, considered a public body for purposes of those statutes. I'm going to talk first about the Open Meetings Act. The Open Meetings Act is part of, was part of, the post-Watergate legislation that swept the nation, frankly, as is the Freedom of Information Act for that purpose. They both, the intent of both is to bring as much transparency as possible to how government works, not just at the stout, state level or county level, but including the municipal level, so the local level. The Open Meetings Act basically, first, it's important to keep in mind when you're talking about the Open Meetings Act, the default position, at least of the courts, and frankly, the statute, is in favor of openness, always in favor of openness. So, if it's a close call, if it's right on the line, more often than not, the courts are going to conclude that whatever we're talking about should have occurred at an open meeting. Okay, so what do we mean by an open meeting? Well, a meeting is open to the extent that it is properly posted, and there are provisions in the Open Meetings Act for how to post particular types of meetings. It has to be open to the public in the sense that they have to know where it is, when it is. They have to be given an opportunity to speak. So, for example, on your regular agenda, there's going to always be a public comment section. That's really required under the Open Meetings Act. And that's in addition, as an aside, I'm getting off track here a little bit, that would be in addition to, let's say you had a public hearing or two scheduled on an agenda for a particular night, that's separate from the public comment section. So, if there's a public hearing, let's say you've got a rezoning or something, and there's a public hearing that's been noticed, when people show for that and speak to that, that doesn't prohibit them, and in fact, it's still, the Open Meetings Act is still going to require that the city, at some point in that agenda, have what a generic public comment section. So, that's what we're talking about. Two general rule, well, there's really one general rule when we're talking about the Open Meetings Act, and that is that a meeting of a public body has to be properly posted and open to the public. So, what does that mean? Well, now, now we start getting into the details a little bit. A meeting is defined, and I've put that in the handout that I gave you, it's on page one, right smack dab in the middle. A meeting's defined in the Open Meetings Act as the convening of a public body, so a convening of the City Commission in this case, at which a quorum is present for the purpose of deliberating towards or rendering a decision on a matter of public policy. Okay. What's a quorum? Well, the quorum under both your charter and your bylaws is going to be anytime we have a majority. So, a majority of this commission gathering together constitutes a meeting for purposes of the Open Meetings Act. Towards, towards rendering a decision, I think everybody knows what that means when you're voting. So, if you're voting, you're taking, you're making a decision. Deliberations, which is also included in that definition, isn't defined, interestingly, in the Open Meetings Act. There are a couple, obviously, typically, the courts would say, okay, well, let's pull out Webster's and see what Webster's says. And if you look at the definition that I've provided, along with the one case where this was kind of discussed, what you'll see is deliberations are basically discussions, exchanges of information, or points of view amongst members of that public body. So, again, if we've got a quorum of the public body, and they're either deliberating towards or deciding on a matter of public policy, that's a meeting. And that means if it's a meeting, unless there's an exemption, and we'll talk about that in a second, unless there's an exemption, it has to be properly posted and can only occur at an open meeting. Okay. What are some of those exceptions? Well, as you know, because we've done it, there are certain limited exceptions under the Open Meetings Act that allow us to go into what is called closed session. Typically, it would be either, for your, for your purposes, it's probably going to be to discuss labor negotiations that are ongoing. It's going to be to discuss pending litigation, which means it has to be a case that's actually been filed in the courts. Threatened litigation isn't sufficient. Or, it's probably going to be a written legal opinion. Those are the three most typical reasons why you would be going into closed session. There are others, but those are the ones that would most often be utilized by Walker, for example. Okay. Let's talk just a little bit about closed sessions. Bottom of page one, in case anyone's following. What we can do in a closed session is we can deliberate, so we can talk, discuss, as we were saying before, all those things that go toward making a decision, but we can't actually make a decision. Any decision that the body makes has to occur regardless of whether it's a closed session, proper closed session topic or not, any decision has to occur back here in an open session of the City Commission. Sometimes, that's a fine line, and sometimes people get a little uncomfortable with what goes on in a closed session. I've included a case that I thought actually is obviously somewhat favorable towards the concept of a vigorous discussion in closed session without actually making a decision, and in this case, it was a Board of Education discussion. But the chair, the point of the case, the reason I included it, the chair in that case very much went from person to person amongst the board members and said, where are you at on this? Now, that, it was challenged, because he was basically trying to build up a consensus and so that he knew, so everybody in the room knew what the position of the body was. That was challenged, and the, basically, interestingly, what the court said was, they have to be able to do that. You have to be able to build that consensus, make strategic decisions, share your position on those things, or closed sessions would frankly be a waste of time. I think that's a good, realistic interpretation of the intent here, and it wasn't a decision. There wasn't a formal vote. Building up a consensus, giving people an opportunity to express their concerns one way or the other, was not the equivalent of, okay, I want someone to make a motion. So. Okay, that's page one. And we're right on schedule. Okay. Couple of things that come up from time to time that I, I at least wanted to put out there relative to the Open Meetings Act. One is, who can go into a closed session? The law is clear that it is up to this body to decide who goes in. So, if, to the extent, let's say you're going in to discuss a written legal opinion, you want to include the attorney. Okay, fine. You also want to include the engineer, and the city manager, and assistant city manager, and the treasurer, because you think they may have a role to play. None of them, without your approval, can go into that closed session. Even though you're an officer of the city, you don't have a right to be in there. Only the members of this commission would have a right to be in the closed session. But, it's up to you to decide, yes, we want X in, or no, we don't want X in. And there are circumstances where X would not be, you could exclude someone, and it may be beneficial to do so. The only exception to that, and I don't want to drill down too much, is to the extent you're conducting the review of an employee or officer, which is one of the exceptions for a closed session, then you can only do that in closed session with that person's concurrence. So, they have to basically say, yes, you can go into closed session to discuss my annual review, something like that. Now, theoretically, you could still exclude them if they were amenable to that. But typically, it would be, so for example, if you were doing Daryl's review and you wanted to do it in closed session, you certainly have the legal right to do so. And if he was okay with it, he wouldn't have to be in the room. That would be, but he would have to consent one way or the other to whatever format you chose. So. Okay. Now, we're getting into the juicy stuff. Prohibited meetings. Okay, the obvious prohibited meeting is calling each other up, or somebody calls, let's say the mayor decides he wants to know how everybody on this board's, or this commission's going to vote on a particular matter. And so, he starts calling, he starts writing down the roster of the City Commission and saying, okay, I've talked to Steve, and Steve's a yes on this. What are you? You know, and then he calls back and says, okay, I've talked to Carol and Steve, they're a yes. Melanie, what are you? That's prohibited. That's clearly a, at best, an effort to evade the Open Meetings Act and the way it's intended to be utilized. So, those type of informal discussions are not, are not okay. On the other hand, if the mayor, and I'm sorry if I'm picking on the mayor, on the other hand, if the mayor were to start calling and simply say, Steve, I'm just curious, where are you at, that one-on-one conversation technically is fine. There's no violation of the Open Meetings Act. And if he then called Carol and said, I've talked to Steve, without sharing the substance of the discussion that you had with Steve, that would be fine as well. I generally discourage those conversations. I just think, at a minimum, it looks bad. But to the extent any one commissioner wants to reach out to one or two other commissioners and just bounce ideas off of them, that's not illegal. That's okay. It becomes illegal when together we structure either expressly or implicitly, basically, a quorum. There's going to be a point at which it becomes more like a meeting than not, and in this case, a telephonic meeting, and that's not okay. So. Okay. One that's in the news, a fair amount, email or text. Emails are ubiquitous, texts are ubiquitous. It would not be unusual, I imagine, for many of you to be on some of the same email lists. Something comes out of the city manager's office, for example, sharing information. To the extent it's simply the distribution of information coming out of the city manager, and you're all being copied on it, that's fine. There's nothing, that's not a violation of the Open Meetings Act. The problem we run into is when somebody kind of forgets the context of what's going on, and without even being aware perhaps of the other, that the other members of the commission were all copied on that email, hits reply to all and shares an opinion about an upcoming matter. So, in other words, we've got a rezoning coming up in front of the City Commission, and, you know, somebody, Commissioner X, decides to reply to all, saying, I have some real concerns with this because of the environmental degradation it's going to cause, blah, blah, blah. Now, we're really in a very difficult position, because if you look at the few cases that are out there, and frankly, the intent of the Open Meetings Act, what you'll see is where there's that interaction, that's where you run the risk of it becoming a meeting. If you go back to the definition I had before about what deliberation is, in terms of discussion, exchange of ideas concerning a matter of public policy, blah, 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 that's kind of what you're doing at this point. When you hit reply to all, you're kind of straying into deliberations. Now, formerly, the position was, that at least a lot of municipal attorneys took, was, well, but if it's just one commissioner mouthing off and there isn't any other exchange, that's probably not a meeting. And that's probably still technically true if it's still one. There was a case that came out, though, a couple of years ago, involved a park and rec commission, I can't remember what community, it's a Mackey case that's noted here on page two. Basically, what happened there was you had, I want to say, a three- or five-member board, they were emailing back and forth about a matter that was going to be coming up on their agenda. I want to say, all but one of the commissioners, or one of the board members, was engaged in the exchange, some to a large extent, some to a very limited extent. Clearly, though, at least one or two of them didn't say a word, didn't text, didn't email, didn't do anything. They were just, they were just observers, so to speak, of the exchange that was going on. It was found out about, challenged in court. The court in that case concluded, despite the fact that they, there wasn't 100% interaction amongst the members, that was still sufficient to hit deliberations for purposes of the Open Meetings Act, and thus was considered a violation of that act. So, you have to be, the bottom line, you have to be very careful with emails and texts, because I think, I think it's very easy to fall, and frankly, we see it all the time. I mean, there, there isn't a month that goes by that I'm not privy to some email that's being sent out to some governing body in some community, and sure as shoot, somebody's going to hit reply to all and say something. So, and then it's our job to jump in and say, stop, don't, don't do this. So. Anything on that before I move on? Yeah?
Yeah. I have a question. So, let's say, the clerk sends us all some information, and, you know, and I just want to say, great job, thanks for the information. Is that acceptable?
Yeah, but-
I mean, if I don't, I can send it just to the clerk, but then, then the mayor doesn't know that I saw it, and that I got the information, and nobody else knows that. If I don't, if I don't reply all, they don't know that I'm involved.
Well, if all you're doing is acknowledging the receipt of the information, technically, I think that's probably okay. But, take this in the spirit in which it's meant, it's not your job to find out, to let everybody know that you received something. That's, that's on the clerk's office as to whether it went through or not. So, typically, I would, for example, let's say something came out of the city manager's office, and you have a follow-up on something, other than simply acknowledging it, send a reply simply to the city manager's office. Just don't copy anybody else. And I guess I'd be inclined to recommend you do the same thing if you got something from the clerk's office, or you simply wanted to acknowledge, good job, just say, I would just send it back to Sarah and say, appreciate it.
Just to the clerk. Okay. All right. Thanks.
I don't think it's technically a violation, but it's one of those things, it wouldn't take too much for a few others to chime in and say, yes, good idea, I'm looking forward to this item on the agenda, you know, now we've started something we don't want to deal with, so.
Question?
Yes, sir.
I'm back to page one. Quorum, three or more?
For you?
Yes.
Four.
Four.
Because it's a seven member. So, you've got to have a majority.
Okay, so-
So, anytime there's four, anytime there's four of you electronically, telephonically, in person, whatever new technology there may be to get together, anytime there's four of you involved, it's potentially a meeting. So.
I got a question.
Yep.
So, actually, a couple of things that I've seen, so even today, we had something come out, and I wrote a clarifying, I sent back a clarifying question, I copied everybody because it was just a clarifying question on the content.
Okay.
No? It wasn't an opinion, it was, can you say more about that?
Technically, not deliberations at that point. I don't think it's, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a violation. I would generally, however, recommend you just respond to the person.
And is it with the understanding, then, that, so let's say I respond, so I responded to Daryl, and then it would be okay for him to respond to all of us with that, then, additional information?
Yeah, he could respond to all, and then just remind everybody at the bottom after an asterisk, don't hit reply to all, or something like that. Or, I had, yeah, one of the commissioners contacted me, said there was a fault, an inquiry regarding X. Boom, here's the answer. Send it out to everybody. I think that's perfectly fine.
Yeah, it was just a question on the bills, and Carol had a follow-up question. I just provided more information and copied everybody, so-
Right.
Dan will typically send questions to me on the bills, and I reply to all, so-
Right.
They all know what the question was.
Right. As long as, we just have to be really rigorous in not, not getting into discussions, even on something like a bill. Even if it's, I mean, it seems like, geez, who cares about a single entry on a bill? Technically, that's something that's supposed to be, when you approve the bills for a particular pay period, that's a decision. So, you have to be careful not to deliberate regarding it. So.
So, if we each individually had sent clarifying questions to Daryl on the same issue, and then he replied all with each of our individual responses, that still wouldn't be-
I think that'd be okay. I think that'd be okay.
That's interesting.
Yeah, I've never run across that before, so.
That would affect you all, but.
Yeah. Okay, one other thing, last thing on the page two. It's important to emphasize, if I can find page two. It's important to emphasize, when we're talking about public bodies, yes, it applies to the City Commission. It applies to committees as well, technically. So, to the extent that we have committees that, to which authority has been delegated, those two have to be properly posted, noticed, et cetera, et cetera. So, just something to keep in mind. Whether it's, sometimes communities will create ad hoc or advisory committees. To the extent they're truly advisory, and they're not delegated any authority, then you're fine. So, if we had, if the mayor decided we're going to have an ad hoc committee to look at whatever, the need for more dog parks, and they're not delegated any express authority, that's fine. Three members only, couldn't be more than three, which also makes me think, again, as long as I'm just randomly talking, sometimes we'll have a committee where it's less than a quorum of the City Commission, but the committee's, let's say, three members, and we'll have other commissioners show up. That's a problem. That's a problem. I mean, I have a community where occasionally that has happened in the past, so they've taken to put something at the bottom, A, they notice almost everything, even their advisory committees. And they've even taken to putting an asterisk, basically, at the bottom of their notices to the effect that if more than three members of the commission show up, this will technically be a meeting of the City Commission. Now, I don't know that that's going to save us from an Open Meetings Act violation, but at least it's a show of good faith. If you do have a fourth, fifth, sixth member show up to a three-member committee, and they just want to listen and not do anything, no interaction, anything, theoretically, you could at least make an argument, it's not a violation. I think in light of that Mackey case, although that was in a different context, I think there's an argument that the minute that fourth member shows up, and if the other members are talking and deliberating, I think you've got some problems. So, I mean, the easiest way to avoid that is just to notice everything and tell commissioners who aren't on a committee, you, don't, don't come. Wait till the, wait till the committee reports back to you. So. But I know that's something we've dealt with here a couple of times in the past, so. Okay. Social media policy. I'm just going to cut to the chase on this one. I assume you all know the city has an adopted social media policy. I have cut and pasted what I consider to be the most germane portions on the third page relative to how it might impact you as commissioners. The first is up at the top, and this is really relative to the city's social media presence. At the end of the day, that's all to be run through the city manager's office. The city, to the extent the city, you know, once, let's assume the city has determined we're going to have a social media, we're going to have a Facebook page, we're going to have a whatever page. To the extent it's the official city social media page, the city manager's office is singularly responsible for administering that. So, it would not be appropriate, for example, for a city commissioner to try to dictate what goes into the social media, what that page, to try to see that things are inserted. It's basically left to the administrative capabilities of the city manager. That's to be distinguished from halfway down the page, use of personal social media. Under your social media policy, certainly, there's a recognition that every one of you does, you do not give up, simply by being a commissioner, the right to participate on social media platforms, if that's what you want to do. That's your, you have every right in the world. Where we run into issues, and what the social media policy is intended to address, are situations where you're holding yourself out on your, now, let me put it this way. If I have a Jeff Sluggit Facebook page, which I don't, so that I can keep up with my family, which I don't, that's personal. Now, as a matter of policy, I think it probably wouldn't be a horrible idea, and your social media policy kind of implies that you'd still make the city manager's office aware of that. But that's purely personal. If Jeff Sluggit has a Facebook page, city attorney, City of Walker, or I want to put the City of Walker logo on my Facebook page, or I want to put the City of Walker logo on my LinkedIn page, or I want to report, because I don't care about my ethical obligations, what we talked about at a recent City Commission meeting, now I am holding myself out as a mouthpiece of sorts, a spokesperson of sorts, or having some official designation with that social media page. And that's what we can't do. That, that's what we can't do absent very clearly stating, then there's disclaimer language that the city, city's approved, you know, basically saying, yes, I'm a city commissioner for whatever ward, there's this issue about this park, you know, why don't we have more dog parks? I feel this way. Under that circumstance, where it's, where it's city business, then you have to include the disclaimer. Now, would you have to include the disclaimer but for the social media policy? No, you wouldn't. And it's not legally required. There's, I can't point to anything in the Michigan Constitution or state statute that says, if you're going to have, you know, if you're going to opine on city business, and you're an official for that public body, you have to include this disclaimer. There is none. You know, could the City Commission change the social media policy so you don't have to include that disclaimer? Absolutely. That's up to you as a City Commission. But as of now, this is the adopted social media policy for the city. And this is one of those areas where, at least in my opinion, if in doubt, I would run it through the city manager's office and try to get their direction. If nothing else, you've covered yourself a little bit by taking it to the department that's theoretically in charge of social media for the city. So.
Jeff, on that, I have a question. So, a lot of us use social media as a way to purvey information, city events, things like that. That, I would imagine, is not something you need a disclaimer for if I'm sharing, like, oh, we have this event, versus, I think, it seems like what you're referring to is stating opinions or different things like that, actual views.
Yeah, I think that's probably a fair construction. I, I read the social media policy as addressing policy issues. So, yeah, if you're weighing in on policy matters, and that's pretty broad, but if you're weighing in on policy matters, then I, my take of your policy is then you should be including this disclaimer. To the extent you're simply posting new dog park opening, you know, July 4th, I don't think that requires a disclaimer. So.
Jeff, can you go back? I thought I heard you say something about, on your commissioner page, if you were reporting something that happened at the City Commission, that would not be allowed?
That reporting, I guess, opining is what, was what I was saying. So, to the extent you're simply saying there was a discussion regarding X, that's fine, although there, again, it's pretty broadly worded. If you read that subsection A, I, I would interpret it to be on the safe side, include the disclaimer, if you're talking about city business. So, if it was a conversation that went on-
Right, but I'm talking about my commissioner page.
Okay.
So, it would be inappropriate for me to report what happened at a commission meeting on my commissioner page?
No, I'm not saying it's inappropriate.
Oh, that's what I'm trying to clarify.
Oh, no, 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 no. I'm sorry. No, no. I think, I think if you want to report, that's fine. To the extent there's any indication of how you feel about the topic or any of those things, then I think the disclaimer kicks in immediately. But not, it's not inappropriate.
Oh, okay. So, what about, how do we handle, I've, I've seen this, and I probably have done this, and I see this in a lot of other pages, where an official is trying to gauge the opinion of the public. So, do you think we should do X?
I'd put the disclaimer in.
And, okay, so-
I mean, you can still, if you just want to take the temperature of the room-
Right.
And I know it's used that way a lot. I think you have every right to do that. But I would, because it's a public policy issue you're dealing with, rather than just an announcement, for example, I would put the disclaimer on that.
Okay. So, it would be, and I'm talking about just Facebook only, because I'm, so I know you can pin post, so they show up at the top every time. So, would it be okay to just put this right there, so that's the first thing people see on your page every time?
Well, if I knew what a pin post was.
Okay.
I'll, I think, yes. If it shows up every time, right.
Yeah.
Like, part of your signature, almost. Right, right.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay, thanks.
Two other quick things, top of page four, and I think it's helpful that I didn't actually number any of the pages, so... Two other things, obviously, we don't, it's inappropriate under your social media policy to share confidential or proprietary information. The reality is, you are made privy because of your position to an awful lot of information that the public at large is not aware of, that might not even qualify to be disclosed. So it's just something to keep in mind, and obviously using the city logo or anything else without prior authorization. Okay, so that's Open Meetings Act, unless anybody has any questions, I'll do a quick thing on Freedom of Information Act.
Can you just quickly talk about social engagements?
Oh, yeah, 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 I'm sorry, yeah, 'cause we, social engagements meaning, okay, we have four or more meetings socially. Short answer is that so long as deliberations aren't occurring, that's fine. So, and in fact, there's a carve-out in the Open Meetings Act itself for social, essentially social events, so to the extent the cities has an end-of-the-year holiday party or something like that, and you all show up, okay, technically I've got more than a quorum of the public body there, that's fine, as long as, again, you don't deliberate. And one of the cases that I apparently have already skipped over, even noted, a lot of times you'll see after a meeting, after we've adjourned, there will still be four or five commissioners hanging out kinda talking. That in, according to that case, that in and of itself is fine, so long as we're talking about our favorite dog, and not, and not deliberations, okay? We don't wanna be talking about, "Well, what'd you think about X that was just up in front of us," or, "Wow, that's gonna be coming back in two weeks, I'm not looking," I mean, that we need to avoid, so...
Got a follow-up.
Yep.
So you said if the city were hosting like a holiday party, what if the commission wanted to do like a team-building thing somewhere?
That's fine, that's fine.
If I wanted to have everybody over for a barbecue?
All fine.
Even if it's just the commission and nobody else?
Yep, yep. And we don't need to notice it or anything else, it doesn't become open to the public, so long as we all agree ahead of time, we're not gonna talk shop.
Got it, thanks.
So... Okay, Freedom of Information Act, real quickly, again, you're a public body, under the Freedom of Information Act, anybody outside of prison, basically, has a right to send a letter, or send a request to the city for a copy of a public record. What's a public record? Well, I've included the definition about three-quarters of the way down, and this is from the Freedom of Information Act. The important parts are really twofold, the, it's a writing, prepared, owned, used, in the possession of, et cetera, et cetera, the public body, in the performance of an official function. Okay. So, very, again, limited exceptions, exceptions to that, in terms of what we can refuse to disclose to someone in, in response to a FOIA request. Again, things like privileged attorney letters, blah, 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 those we can all refuse to disclose, or refuse to disclose. But some, there's some interesting questions, though. Okay, emails and texts, well, it says a writing, does that apply to emails or texts? In my opinion, and I don't think there's any dispute about this, the answer is yes. So the fact that it is cyber-writing, if there is such a thing, or digital writing, that's still a writing, and the courts are going to view that phrase, particularly as technology changes, in a fashion can, to include as much as possible in the terms of the form of communication. So it doesn't include just, it's, it doesn't have to be paper on pen, I guess, or pen on paper, I guess, is what I'm saying. Okay, personal phones, personal computers, interesting question. Okay, so, as a city commissioner, I have my own laptop, it's not a laptop given to me by the city or supplied by the city, or I have my own phone, not given to me by the city, not paid for by the city. I sometimes do official business on my personal laptop, or my personal phone. I sometimes will send texts to constituents about X or Y. Are those public records for purposes of FOIA? I think the answer is yes. Now, I know that is not a universally shared opinion. A, I tend to be somewhat conservative when it comes to either the Open Meetings Act or the Freedom of Information Act. B, we have, on the top of the next page, we have this Howell case, relatively recent, and it's really interesting. It was, in that case, you had essentially people using school computers, so public employees using school computers, they were doing union work, basically. Now, the union work had nothing to do with their position as a school employee, it was just, it was private union stuff. Somebody submitted a FOIA request, basically wanted everything, and the response was, "Well, you're not gonna get that, because those aren't public records." Long and short of it, the court concluded that's right. The fact that it was on a school computer in and of itself didn't convert whatever was on that computer into a public record. I would be, and these were personal, they weren't used by the, they weren't being used by the school district, they weren't being relied on by the school district, so it was, I mean, it was, it was in the personal realm. I think the reverse of that is true, which is why I say, even though the fact that you own your phone, or that you own your computer, if you're wearing your city hat and performing part of an official, part of your official function, I think those records are subject to disclosure, and I think the fact that it's your phone doesn't frankly make a difference. It would be too easy to avoid the whole intent of the Freedom of Information Act if we just said, "Okay, everybody, you, only, only do official business on your own phone." And that way, that way we're covered, we'll never have to disclose anything. I, I just, I cannot envision a situation in which a court would uphold that rationale. And it's easy to forget, it's easy, I mean, there is something to be said for keeping two separate phones, or having a, having a computer through the city, and, and you only do city work on one, and you don't do city work on the other. It's an interesting area, and I think clearly we're going to be getting some more litigation on that over the next couple of years. Okay, last, personal notes. So if I'm writing personal notes to myself right now about, I don't know, how boring I am right now, or something, just kidding. Someone's here for a rezoning, and you're making some notes to yourself, just for your own memory, so you know what questions to ask, or something. Are those personal notes subject to the Freedom of Information Act? The answer we've gotten thus far from the courts is no. So long as they're not used, so long as they're not used as part of your, they're not used to help put the minutes together, they're not relied on by the city commission in this case as part of its decision, to the extent they're just your own jottings, and they're personal, albeit for purposes of addressing a rezoning issue, for example, they're not subject to FOIA. So, that's a good thing. Our door is locked up there. Thank you. Anyway. So, glad to take any questions, I'm sorry if I went over a little bit.
I have one quick one.
Yeah.
So, thinking of like three-member committees and things like that, and this is something that we have some at the state level, too, but if, if I'm a, a member of a three-person committee, and me and one other member of that committee are having a discussion outside of the committee chamber, is that then subject to open meetings?
So it's you and...
So let's say me, Carol, Melanie are on a committee together, and me and Carol are having a discussion about something pertinent to the committee.
Yeah, if it's a committee that has been delegated authority of some type, so let's say it is, then yes, if there's two of you, that's enough to technically qualify as a committee, as a, as a public body subject to the Open Meetings Act.
Got it.
I have a final question here, too.
Yeah.
So in relation to the committees also, I guess, if I'm not, I mean, if commissioners, so how do we advocate for constituents, or how do we collect information that's pertinent to our ward, like in an ordinance meeting? If I'm not on the ordinance committee, and I'm not at the ordinance committee meeting, how do I then get that information?
How do you get it, from the ordinance committee?
Yeah.
Or, well, they, there should be a report from the ordinance committee. If you know there's a member of the ordinance committee, and if you know, because I presume you get their agendas also, if there's something that you know is going to be of particular interest to you or your constituents, nothing wrong with pulling that committee member aside ahead of time and saying, "Just so you know, t-t-t, these are the issues I have, and, you know, if you can make sure those get raised." Otherwise, unless we wanna open it up as a city commission meeting, then we'd wait till it comes back to you as a city commissioner for adoption or action, and that would be the appropriate time to say, "I appreciate what the ordinance committee's done thus far, but, dah, 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 dah." Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anything else?
Commissioners?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Nice seeing everybody.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right, we are a little past seven, go ahead and call the regular commission meeting to order, and I'd like to invite Commissioner Kent to deliver the invocation.
Shall we pray? Almighty God, our source of strength and courage, we ask thee to help everyone affected by Hurricane Dorian, to protect our police and fire departments as they serve so many in their time of need, and give, of time of need, and give strength and courage and wisdom to all of our military and their families, as their mission is to serve and protect our country and freedom. We pray and give thanks for bringing everyone to this meeting safely, and to guide the city commission with the decisions we make, as we are blessed to live in this great community. Lord, we ask this in your name, amen.
Amen. Would you stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could ask the clerk's office to call the roll, please? Thanks again, Jeff.
Mayor Carey.
Present.
Commissioner Kent.
Present.
Commissioner Gilbert.
Present.
Commissioner DeShane.
Present.
Commissioner Glanville.
Present.
Commissioner Broders.
Present.
And Commissioner Heisinga.
Present.
All right, next on our list is a outlook for approval of the August 26, 2019 minutes. Unless there are questions on it.
Make motion to approve.
Motion of Commissioner Gilbert, do we have support?
I'll support.
Commissioner DeShane, support? Any other conversation on this? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Approval's passed. Is there, is there any public comment on the agenda items this evening? All right. Do not, um, reports from the city manager, and I'll let you tee this up, Daryl.
Sure. Really not my report, but we have some folks here representing the Michigan Fallen Warrior Memorial presentation. Bill Jackson is here, he's leading that group, so I'm just gonna turn it over to Bill and kinda have him introduce the project, and let you know what they're interested in presenting to us, and really just trying to gauge if the city has interest, any interest in working with Bill and his team to bring this project to fruition. So, Bill, I'm gonna turn it over to you, and you can please provide the history of the project, and where you are, and what you're looking to do.
I'm the tripod.
Yeah, you're the tripod.
I ran out of time today to stop by Staples to get an easel, so I brought along Tom Antor, president of the Board of Finished the Mission. So, well, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you, and Daryl, thanks for the invite this evening to talk about this project. Tom and I are both members of an organization called Finished the Mission Veterans Relief Fund, that was actually founded by Mr. Antor, excuse me, Commissioner Antor, going out six years ago, and he could tell the story better than I can, but long story short, as the Veterans Relief Fund, one of the things that we, when we looked around five or six years ago, we saw that we were doing a, a good job in Kent County, taking care of our veterans, and seeing that their memories were, and, and they were honored appropriately, but there was still more we could do. So we formed an organization called Finished the Mission, and much like the name of the organization says, it's kind of what we do, we kinda stand in the gap where other veterans' relief services don't maybe fall down. For instance, this year, we have kept, as of our board meeting last Friday, we've kept 21 veterans in their homes and their lights on. Oftentimes, these veterans find themselves in a real tough spot, and we're kind of there to sort of, again, stand in the gap and help these individuals. So a few years back, three, four, we came upon this project.
This one?
Yeah.
It's been about two and a half years.
Okay, so about three years ago, we became aware of a project that had began and sort of faltered. It was, the whole idea behind this was to honor our post nine elec, nine eleven heroes from West Michigan and the state of Michigan who had fallen in the Gulf War on terror, and it's called the Michigan Fallen Warriors Memorial. There was some efforts to put this memorial up in West Michigan, that sort of fell apart, really for no fault of anyone else, other than there wasn't an organization behind it to kind of push it, similar to our organization. Kinda got maybe a tenth of the way, 20% of the way there, the home they had found for it had kind of fallen through, and, and as a result, fundraising efforts had kind of fallen away. And so once again, we sort of felt like this was, I think both Tom and I, when Tom brought it to me, as Tom often does, gets me pretty excited, and I think we both looked at each other and said, "This is absolutely what we're here for, we're here to kind of fill in that gap and finish the mission." So, we began working on this with the artist, with Fritz Wallfield from Wallfield Construction, and most importantly, looking to find a home for it. And as we kind of looked around West Michigan, actually, it was a, it was a conversation that popped up last summer, we heard about your park and your memorial in honor of your first responders in, in Walker, and we thought, man, wouldn't that be a cool place to, if there was room, to talk to the city of Walker and put this memorial? And then when we drove out and saw that it was on Remembrance Road, that's pretty much all we could stop talking about was that, it was, again, was one of those things that was seemed to meant to be. So, really what we're looking for this evening is just a conversation to kind of get the ball rolling with council. We'd love to find a way, working with staff, to locate this memorial, you know, in, in your park next to the township building, or excuse me, the, the city buildings, and work with the city of Walker. We've got a fundraising effort kind of in the wings, ready to go as soon as we find a home. We believe that the philanthropic community in West Michigan, based on conversations that we've had, based on initial talks at our big event that we always do in September at Fifth Third Ballpark, we feel like we can easily raise the dollars to, to build this memorial, and we'd, we'd love to see it kind of come to fruition here in the city of Walker.
Commissioners, questions, comments? Everybody can see the plans there from the, above the...
Yeah, can you walk us through the plans, and kind of what the design, you know, how much space, and, you know, size, and things like that?
Sure, sure, absolutely. So, the, the whole idea being, and I think that's a great question, I wanna start with, I usually don't need a microphone, so, so I wanna start with sort of the big plan here. So the three bronze, these will be three bronze cast statues, these three bronze cast statues are actually fallen West Michigan heroes. Their likenesses have been used for the, for the bronze statues, and in fact, Staff Sergeant Chad Bulmer is being honored at our annual Freedom Cruise event this year. So, so we begin with that West Michigan connection, right? And then we look then to the, oh, will this help? We'll look at that. So...
Commissioners, can you see it?
Does that work? So, and I have Mick Carlson here, the artist, who might be able to talk to some of the design elements a little bit better. So then we deal with sort of the circular elevated in, in honor, and then this back grand wall then, with that placed on it, the names of all the fallen heroes in the state of Michigan would go on the back here. It would sit in as you walk in, I think we do a bit of, yeah, so as you walk in in this area here, where you, you have the centerpiece of your park is still the first responder memorial, we would be set off to the side, back in, as you walk into the elevated, so it's sort of, you have a bit of an elevator, the idea would be to sit back into that hill. And again, we wanna work with the planning department, city managers, to sort of develop what that engineering would look like in the drainage, and, and kind of dig into the details of what that project would look like.
And what's the approximate size?
Oh, I, my apologies.
True, thirty foot in diameter.
Okay.
Base, oh, everybody, I'm from Wallfield.
Right, right.
So, yeah, the base would be approximately thirty foot in diameter, and it'd be a curvature back wall, be a poured concrete wall. I've worked quite a while with a lot of different subcontractors on how to get this design in order to put the polished black granite on the surface of the concrete afterwards. So, we worked out with getting a special form made up to make that curvature and get that circumference made up and then step it down as the grade drops down and then that allows for future names and so forth as I haven't decided on how the names are going to be placed on it yet as far as whether the timing or the alphabetical or whatever yet, but the concrete would be out of, a base would be out of concrete with steps in front and then we'd use stained concrete to generate a compass look. So, going back to the military part, it's showing true north and south and east and west. And then we figured a sidewalk coming out and the main sidewalk leading up to it and so forth. I think in most retrospect of all, though, we want to make sure that we do not take away from what's already there, it'd be more of a sister memorial of what's there because what you have there now is a very beautiful setting, so we don't want to, you know, take away any of that part, so.
And Fritz, if I might, for the commissioners' purpose, the, for the, I spoke with both chiefs on a couple of occasions now and I would say numerous longer time members of the police and fire that were part of the original memorial and there's absolutely zero objection to, they're actually excited about the expansion and the, really, the spirit of collaboration between the two, that this is meant to be more people that are coming to visit and see that, it's better for both, you know, both groups, absolutely. So, they're actually in support of it.
I think this is an outstanding idea. I love, I love the concept. I think it's a great use of that space and a way to really honor those fallen soldiers. In terms of the design, is that a final design or you, it sounds like you have some willingness to work with staffs. I'd love to see maybe sidewalk on both of those. It looks like there's just the one side to it. I think adding to the other side, allowing folks to kind of stroll off of remembrance and through the memorial would be really great and those are details, but I, in concept, I think I really, I really do like the idea of having this here and I think it's a great location, like you guys said.
I like it too. I too had it written down, walkways or pathways, so that it could be a little more cohesive.
Just a comment, then Bill and his team are here, just for the concept right now and all those details are things that we have discussed early on that we know that if it gets, you know, if you are in favor of this, we'll go to the next step with these guys and we'll get to a site plan issue and, you know, deal with access and drainage and all that stuff and how it fits in and limit the removal of vegetation because we really haven't been on the site to walk it specifically with the dimensions or anything yet as a team and with the city. So, if we're comfortable moving forward, we would certainly work with the team and get to the next step and keep you in the loop along the way.
It's such a beautiful piece of property. When we walked it into natural features that are a part of that property, we were just really excited, with the great mature trees that are there and the natural elevation changes, it just kind of seemed like it was perfect.
You know, and I think the, when we look at the reason why Remembrance Road was named what it is and I think as Commissioner Antor was staying out by the rock, letting us know that the door was locked earlier. That has the, you know, the bronze plaque on it and you think back to that time and then I think to even Mr. Carlson here, when this was initially, when I was made aware of this and then heard who was actually going to be behind this, your reputation proceeds. So, I have no doubt that this is going to be the finest work you could possibly do. So, on that end of it, I just, I think it's a neat project. Can you actually, Bill or Fritz, change the second one right there? Yes. Just to give a little bit of context, you know, for the group there, the things that stick out to me there is, you know, really the, Fritz, you were describing the detail you're going into to get that polished, you know, look and then the practicality of having the concrete, the steps are there. I'm sure we'll have our ADA accessibility all addressed within that, so not worried there. But when you think of one of the neatest things this summer and I know a lot of us have seen this, when you're up here and whether it's even during a workday or on the weekends, the amount of people that actually sit out here, read books, self-reflection, just enjoying the peace and quiet, it is a lot more than what I think we realize and this is just one of those further enhancements that assuming we can get everything worked out and it sounds, you know, from the commissioners, like there's some good dialogue here around that. I want to get feedback from everybody here, but if we're good with that, I see this as a definite enhancement to our grounds up here.
Generally, a picture says a thousand words, but I see this picture and then you're telling about putting the names on the wall and everything and I looked at the picture and I thought, what are they going to do with the wall, you know, and there's a lot of things there that if you're not military, you may not understand, but when you explain the compass and the true north and I think a lot of thoughts went into this and I think it would be, be a very nice thing to have here in the city and for everyone to enjoy it. And I think it's, to have these in different places where people will see it and realize that we haven't forgotten, it's a good thing to have. So, I'd like to see it get off, get off the ground and get started.
Commissioners, any other questions, comments?
I love our Walker, the whole Walker campus and the idea of maximizing or starting to make use of this beautiful piece of property, I think is a great idea and I think this is certainly another good addition to what we have going on here.
So, at this point, I think we can, if we can give you guidance back, thank you for the preparation, the detail and if, yes, Commissioner Antor, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank you for considering this because you're right, when we understood the property was on remembrance and, you know, that was just another piece, I thought, man, this is, and our name is Finished the Mission, reading the history of remembrance, it kind of ties it all together and I'm so appreciative of the fact that you guys appreciate our military and understand the sacrifice. And if you get a chance, I'd really like and encourage you to come down to our Freedom Cruise event at Fifth Third Ballpark on Sunday, September 22. You'll see firsthand how much enthusiasm, people, that you have for our veterans. It's turned into a, it's all about honoring fallen and also Fritz Wallfield's family, they put together the park alongside the veterans home just to the north. It is absolutely beautiful. When my dad was there with Alzheimer's disease, he didn't know much of anything, he didn't remember anything, but he loved going down to that park and that is what Fritz did and I still can't believe how beautiful it was. How many years ago did he do that?
I think that was eight, nine years ago. We donated our whole summer there, our crew went in there and actually it was started by the Rotary and we finished it for them.
Yeah, I mean, they went above and beyond, but so that speaks to his work, I think Mick's speak, his work speaks for itself and we've got a lot of big players coming up more with us to make sure it's done the right way. It's all about respecting and we want to make sure we do it right, but thank you so much for letting us present.
And maybe the direction we can give back, then if, we'll just work with the managers and, you know, getting the details and then I'll come back to the commission at some point, time for, you know, for the conversation action at that point, but the fact we've got two longtime elected officials here is, I think is a good thing and the construction reputation that you have, Mick, your work, really a second to none, so looking forward to all of those guys.
For some, everybody, it's a good thing to be elected.
Be nice. Give me, give me another two weeks, Commissioner, we'll see. Thank you, gentlemen.
We appreciate you a lot.
Yeah.
We're just having a discussion on open meetings.
Yeah, yeah, very timely. Alrighty, good. Well, we'll next move to the consent agenda. The only thing we have on there is the expenditures, the amount of 1.9300, just 1 million, 936,514.41 cents if I can talk tonight. Looking for approval on the bills.
I'll make that motion.
Motion of Commissioner Glanville.
I'll support.
Support for Commissioner Groters. Any other conversation on that? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, bills are paid. This will be the last opportunity for any other public comment, whether on the agenda or not. All right. Next on the list is the September schedules and before I jump to the September 23, I know, actually, no, that's in October, we'll get to that later, but we're good on that one. I was, we're a little worried about the last October meeting. I know Commissioner Groters and myself are going to be gone. Did I hear there was somebody else gone that last week of?
Yeah, I'm going to be out September 23.
Okay, so just one on September and then the two of us for the last October.
No, I'm gone September 23.
You're gone 23, okay. Keep thinking October, sorry, my bad. All right, so we have two, so we have, we're good, so, all right, nobody can be sick that night, which means fix the cough. All right, we're good. All right, thank you. And then we'll open up at this point. Jill, anything from the clerk's office we should be aware of? Okay. Commissioner Gilbert?
Yeah, just had a, the only thing that I had during our short break was planning commission meeting, we did some stuff, an expansion of a building over on a three mile road off of what is a private street that the kind of leads out to Three Mile. We got some stormwater issues over there, some issues with the way the water flows, but I think that we were able to get a pretty significant improvement from the expansion, so I think we're, we're pretty excited about that, but other than that, it's been pretty quiet for me.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Glanville?
Yeah, a follow-up question about the planning commission meeting. I understand there were, was a group of residents who spoke about Blaine's?
Yeah, so Blaine's got tabled and because I think staff and the developer weren't quite where they needed to be in terms of review, there was one gentleman who did make some comments, I think that he is planning to come back and kind of reiterate those, but just on the issue of traffic volumes and they kind of referenced the site across the street, the new apartment complex that we've put there. I think we all are very aware of the traffic issues we've got on Wilson, especially at that intersection with Lake Michigan Drive. That's something we'll work through once we get to the actual review steps on Blaine's.
All right, thanks. Yeah, I just was curious what the concerns were. Yeah, not much from me, surprise. I was helping, I'm putting out some flyers for the meeting next week and have put some stuff out for Pumpkin Bash and I made an effort to target the first ward because I know we are looking to get more engagement out there, so hopefully we can capitalize on that.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Groters?
Nothing for me.
Glad to have you back. Commissioner Heisinga?
None.
In between coughs? Commissioner DeShane?
Okay, yeah, let's see. So, Oscar and I run a lot and we go by this group of ladies by Coventry Woods, the nursing home right on Remembrance.
They sit right out in front, that two, three of them?
Yes, they sit out in front and they know him and they feed him dog treats, so he pulls me a little bit faster when he sees them. And they were telling, telling me, well, Oscar too, but they were telling me that the street light above the crosswalk flickers and goes out at dusk, so I'd like to have that looked at and they also are concerned because there's been some, some accidents there within the last month. Car was hit and hit a cyclist, a young kid, he was okay, but the cars were damaged and they were wondering if we could potentially get some maybe flickering lights. There's no stop sign there, it's more or less, more or less a slow down kind of approach, but they do cross that often, going to Dollar General and back and so I'd like to see if there is something that could be possibly done about that area.
Darryl, was that something we could check with the chief on, final details on the bike?
Good, well, we'll check on the street light, but the signing of the crosswalk will run that through traffic committees. There's certain requirements on signing and stuff.
Okay. Well, because it doesn't say stop, it's obvious, but it does have a where it's.
Not required stop.
It's not. It's a caution and probably a stop if someone is, you know.
But they have, we can do that.
Well, I know.
Unless we adopt an ordinance for stopping at crosswalks.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to keeping it as is, but I think that there needs to be more understanding or something that brings a little bit more attention to, to that area.
Traffic committee, they can look at that.
Okay.
It's been a few years since we put that crosswalk in, you can evaluate how it's been operating.
But don't they have some of them now, like where you, you're on the intersection, you push the button and you wait for it to tell you to go?
Yeah, this doesn't do that.
This doesn't have an intersection, but you push the button, it looks clear, you push the button because they're not fast walkers.
No, they are not.
But you got these strobe lights blinking and they can do it while they cross, so that, I think that's what they're looking for maybe.
Well, that and then, then they wanted to make sure that I was aware that the street light will flicker and then it goes out.
And if I can quick address that long list Tammy has, I, you know how I get bored, drive around at night and on the weekends and.
We'll drive by there.
There's, it's on the list already. Consumers actually got the list today. So, they have, there's four on Wilson between Ironwood and Leonard. There was two directly north of Leonard. I think I had probably 11 or 12 on the list.
Okay.
That I submitted. I mean, that one's, they've been out for a little while and we've actually, I want to give Tammy credit, she had been chasing some circles with consumers and finally got some traction with the right person, but that one light's actually been out for some time.
See, they just told me about it yesterday, so, okay. That's it.
The other thing, Darryl, you got, maybe you could send that 1-800 number up for consumers.
It's right on our website to report a street light out.
And they, and actually Tammy does, she doesn't have a bat phone number to call. She actually goes online and submits a request that way and you get an email. I've done it through the city email address just to test it before, but she'll actually, she will help us out if we let her know and she'll go on and put the call in for, and then she gets that notification so she can have it as a tracking mechanism.
Just because you submit a request doesn't mean Consumers is going to get to it right away. Sam Wilson, they have a plan to replace all of those.
I just wanted to go ahead and stop.
That list is minimum four months long, you know, so, but, no, and I have no need for a measuring device other than that, I think I'm good, but thank you.
Mr. Wash?
Just one quick item. Next Wednesday, the 18th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., in this room, we will hold the Northwest Area Master Plan Open House and will be the fourth of four, so you folks are all invited. Generally speaking, it is from Four Mile Road to Leonard Street, the Ottawa County line to Elm Ridge area, so it's the northwest hagetown. And then we will get into plan making, which we just storyboarded up. So, the pieces are coming together, you folks are all invited to that meeting, so thank you.
Thank you. Darryl?
Nothing really. Apologize for the front door, we've having, having issues with the handicap access there. They should be here Tuesday, Wednesday to fix that, so in the meantime, make do.
Not in a reasonable case, because I couldn't make it work, so I turned the switch on. I left the door.
Leave it on, Dan.
It's in the works.
We'll call, we'll call Fritz when I get outside.
And just, just, I don't know if you've noticed, but our DPW has been going through City Hall and replacing some of our can lights with new LED lighting, so you can see the new lights and the circular lights in the ceiling are the new ones. They're going to be replacing these over the seating area too with the same kind. I'm not sure how bright it's going to be or how it's going to look, but I don't know if you're going to like it or not like it. And the other dimmer lights here are also going to be replaced with LEDs, so just FYI and we'll see how, see how it works and see how it looks.
Love the energy efficiency.
And we'll get some rebates on those too.
Yep. All right, a couple of quick things on my list. I will be sharing an email in the next roughly about 24 or so hours on a Eagle Scout project that is, I think the plan is, hopefully it's going to be taking place soon on the city grounds, I think a place to be terminated, is a flag burning project. It's a very admirable project, so it's, but basically it's a fire pit and there's a protocol and a ceremonial aspect to destroying those flags and then how that's done. I actually reached out even to, in addition to the Eagle Scout project, I did not share this with, with Darryl Frankett and I apologize, I reached out to a friend of mine, John Dewise, that owns Dewise Manufacturing, they're actually going to make a custom make. going to make a custom make, a metal cover for that to have locks, so that people cannot use it as a fire pit at any other time. So, John's going to do that. They're going to do stainless steel to make sure that this, this is a long-term type of thing, so I'm really excited about that, and he's doing it for the Eagle Scout at no cost. So, help there. Ward letters, it's sitting on my outbox to hit send when we're done. After talking this through with Kendra a bit, we had, we had a number of different forms of the letters. We just thought from the city brand and the city image, we made a decision that there's a standardized letter, actually stole pretty, most of Commissioner Groeters. It was a short, simple letter, to the point, and, and we felt that that was going to be the best thing, so there's a consistency from ward to ward, so that'll be shared with the new residents. I'll send those out and what those look like when we're done with the meeting here. I have asked Commissioner Kent, because of his passion for the military veterans and military service, to actually take my place at the BOWMIA proclamation on, is it September 20th, I think it is, on that Friday. Reason I'm doing that is, I have two separate invitations that I'll be spending time at the White House. So, the first is welcoming the Prime Minister of Australia for the head of state visit. That'll be on the 20th, so I'll be representing Walker there. And then, I was asked back the first week of October for a couple of days for local and state leaders for Kentucky, Ohio, and Michigan. So, we'll be representing Walker. I've already started to reach out to our congressman to get time on, on his calendar, to the state senators, to the Federal Department of Transportation to check on our Fort Ridge Bridge grant and go basically ask. So, we'll be doing work while I'm there as well, but kind of exciting stuff that Walker will get represented at the White House in two separate events. The Australia one is actually to do with Colac, Australia, because we're a sister city. Actually have a scheduled call with the mayor, some between, sometime between 9:00 and 10:00 o'clock tonight, because they're 14, I think it's 14 hours ahead, Dan, is the time, so, yeah, so, so I have to call them. It's somebody that could cause China a fair amount for logistics. Commissioner DeShane can appreciate this, so have a--
I get it.
--conversation with the mayor of Colac tonight. So, kind of a neat thing that, just that Walker gets some visibility, and I do plan on making use of the time while we're there to talk with our federal legislators, and then also the DOT to make sure that we are staying on task to get that Fort Ridge Bridge project done. So, and I've also actually let the White House know, the liaison that I'm working with for both trips, our interest and need to have that bridge project go through, so won't make any promises, but let's see if we can't get that done while we're there. So, that's that. So--
Have a good day, May, to call the meeting.
During the meeting? Anything other items for the good and order of the, of the group here? All right, entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting, then. Anybody? We can all stay.
Make that motion.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Gilbert.
I'll support.
Motion Commissioner Gilbert, support for Commissioner Kent. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, meeting adjourned.
Great.
Hey, Dan?